Okay, I've got six thirty and I see by present in the room and in present online. We have a quorum, all council members are present. Um, so I will call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Uh, under consent agenda, item one is vouchers totaling one million nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars ninety-three cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions or comments regarding the vouchers? Hearing none and accept a motion or wait, go carry on, sorry, getting ahead of myself. I'm so excited we got visitors in person today. Don't know how to act. Um, minutes for the eight sixteen twenty twenty-two regular meeting did our meeting, did everyone get a copy of those minutes? Were there any questions, corrections to the minutes? And finally, we have a server purchase from GPCN for fifteen thousand fourteen dollars fifty-eight cents. Mr. Styles, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, we, uh, well, we talked about we had a surge on our server. What's that, August?
Late August.
Late August. Twenty twenty-one, um, and so we put in a claim to our insurance and so they'll be paying, uh, fourteen thousand fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents less our deductible. Uh, in order to get it coming quickly, we went ahead and made the order, um, because it's an emerg- well, it. To us, it qualifies as an emergency to get that thing moving, uh, because it takes about two weeks and it was the shortest turnaround that we could get was two weeks. So, uh, we put the order in kind of asking for forgiveness instead of permission on this one because we need to get that server ordered and put in.
So, am I understanding you correctly with the, uh, insurance reimbursement that we will receive? We'll be out of pocket around a thousand dollars.
We actually received the check today in the mail.
Okay, so. All right, any questions regarding that?
Are you still planning on taking the email and stuff to the cloud?
Yes, yeah, exchange will still get moved over into the cloud to Microsoft three sixty-five.
Still need a server.
We're still gonna have a server, yeah, cuz it runs all our accounting software, shared files and everything, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we've covered the three items on our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman By seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four oh. And now we actually are in in, uh, to our public comment opportunity and we have two members of the public here. Is anybody here prepared or would like to to address the council? Rod, okay. Well, I will say to both Alicia Smith and Rod Funk that we are very glad to have you here today. And Rod, we know that a lot of times you're joining us online and we do, we do appreciate it, but it's even nicer to see you here in person, so thanks for coming. All right, so now we're gonna move into a public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate. And so I call the the revenue neutral rate hearing to order. Mr. Styles.
Uh, so part of the revenue neutral portion of the new law, uh, requires that we have a public hearing specifically for this. Um, so anyone from the public can lodge any kind of comment they want to about this, and then you'll be asked to approve resolution. Uh, two two thousand twenty-two dash oh six, which, uh, allows the governing body to levy a property tax rate that exceeds the revenue neutral rate, which is what is proposed in our budget.
Any questions? From the council, any comments from the public? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six. To exceed the revenue neutral rate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Uh, on this item, uh, as it's a resolution, we can, uh, we will need a roll call vote. So, uh, Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign in the city. We'll move on to, uh, our budget hearing, so we'll close the revenue neutral rate hearing. With that action and we will move into our twenty twenty-three budget hearing, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so the twenty twenty-three budget is as presented here, hasn't changed since we've presented it the last few times. So, uh, stand for any questions you may want to ask about that. Uh, the revenue neutral rate, which we talked about in previous action, uh, was forty point six four eight. Um, what we were planning or intending to levy with the proposed budget. If I can get to it, the end, um, is forty-three point six five, which is slightly higher than it was last year. Last year we levied forty-three point four three four. Um, I would note that the Recreation Commission has also done their part on this. Uh, they held a revenue neutral rate hearing, have approved ordinance related to their budget. Um, I've also approved their budget, which is just one mil. Um, so they they're levying nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars as part of their budget, which. Uh, where where they're asking essentially us to do that for them, but they've gone through that process as well. So, one of the mills included in the forty-three point six five is for the Recreation Commission, which sort of has this its own process that has to go through as well, so.
Um, but that's the same as it was last year.
All same as it is last year, it's actually the same, it's written in ordinance that, uh, the Recreation Commission gets one mil, uh, the library gets four. Uh, the special law enforcement gets one and the industrial gets, uh, everything else is kind of as needed. So the, uh, the debt service, the bonded interest fund has its own mil levy, which is, uh, this year at five point two five. And then the general fund is the big piece of that at thirty-one point four.
So, the, uh, mil levy itself compared to last year is is slightly higher, I mean, less than a percentage point?
Yeah, it's, uh, less than two percent, yeah.
Okay, so. It's been reported and it's and it's certainly factual when you look at the numbers that the whole dollars that will be raised because of the increased valuation. In the city, the property in the city will be approximately eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, and that represents what, about four and a half or something less?
Uh, four and three quarter, wow, four and a half percent, yeah.
Okay, increase in whole dollars. Do we have any idea what the, uh, inflation number's been for this year so far?
Yeah, um, tracking from the middle half of last year, it's up about seven percent, I believe. Um, so somewhere in that area, yeah.
So, again, I I guess this is more of a leading up to more of a statement than 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 a question, which is. I feel like we've done a good job with the budget to to keep the mil levy as close to where we were as as before, but also. Not, uh, finding ways to save money because we're not, uh, increasing our revenue at the same pace that inflation is is, uh, is enjoining us. So, I feel like, uh, this is something I can certainly live with and and, uh, as not only as the mayor, but also as a taxpayer, so. Any other co- questions or comments regarding the two thousand twenty-three budget proposal? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to, uh, adopt the twenty twenty-three budget as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Second, Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Um, do we need a roll call or or a voice vote on this? Let's do a roll call, let's do a roll call. Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Yes.
Hey, the twenty twenty-three budget is hereby adopted and the public hearing for that budget is closed. We'll now move on to item F, which is another public hearing for the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund Application. Uh, and I do believe we have a guest with us from EBH Engineering, Mr. Younger.
Thank you, Mayor, so. Brought you guys a little bit of information, you can look at it. I left out all the. Boring details, but the pictures and the the numbers, the bottom dollar amount is on there that we can look at. But, um, as you know, the opportunities out there with the infrastructure funding coming down. To make some improvements to your water system. One of the categories is what they call emerging contaminants. And two of those emerging contaminants are harmful algae and manganese, which Morgan is really fighting out there at the water plant. And the. Unique part of this funding is, I've not seen it before, but it's it's a loan through SRF, but it's one hundred percent forgiveness when you work through it. So, you will accrue all your expenses and then KDHE will write them off as part of that funding package. So it it's something, you know, that's in the city's best interest to go after pretty, pretty seriously. Um, we've been working with Morgan and the group pretty closely on what we can do out there at the water plant to kind of help her. And better treating for those different circumstances when they come along. There the iron and manganese that's coming off the lake or the the harmful algal blooms, the blue-green algae. Or, uh, the worst case scenario is when they'd happen at the same time. So what we've got proposed is, um. Different ways that she can add chemicals to accomplish what she needs to. And, um, we're redoing some piping so that she can target blue-green algae early in the treatment train. And remove that and then add chemicals later that otherwise would interact and cause trouble out there, do cause trouble. So, the the whole concept really. It's just kind of optimization out there at the treatment plant, give give them a lot more options for what they can do. And how they can treat and adjust things that they can't right now, so. We are gonna add a chemical feed source out at the raw water station at the lake. And then we'll add two chemical feed systems at the treatment plant. And then like the looping that you see on here, that's just for, um. Fill out those chemicals, time to interact with that water before they reach final filtration.
Is this something that's being done anywhere else in Kansas?
Um.
You're not?
The emerging contaminant?
No, this particular system that that we're talking about here, is anybody else doing this?
Yeah, so like we're looking at chlorine dioxide, there's a handful of municipalities across state that practice chlorine dioxide. That's what we're looking into here. We've actually just been approved to, uh, move forward with a pilot study on that, so we wanna kind of analyze that further. And see how that's gonna interact to see, you know, what rates will need to apply to work with your feed. The looping is a really efficient way to to achieve the contact time you need to. We've incorporated that into four or five water plant upgrades that we've done in the past. Find that it, you know, it's it's a really good way to help incorporate those chemicals and get the contact time you need to.
So this particular pilot study, the purpose of the pilot, if this has been done elsewhere is is what?
It's specifically to see for for your exact water, you know, what kind? What concentration of chemicals you can apply that it'll be the max amount before you can't use anymore, it'll help us dial it. And it is kind of expectation of the state when you introduce new technology that you you pilot it and show that it, you know, the proof's in the pudding before you go full scale.
So is this something that's gonna help other communities besides Hillsborough, it potential?
Yeah, I think so, um. You know, it's a it's a cost-effective approach instead of just throwing the whole thing in the trash cans and starting over from scratch, which is, you know, with today's prices, just. Isn't feasible for people to to start new, so.
Questions for Mr. Younger, is was that it, Mike?
Yeah, if you look on the last page, it's just our opinion of cost for what we'll be turning in with the applications. The the applications due October fifteenth. Towards the end of September, we'll have completed a thirty-day environmental review, that's a requirement of the SRF funding. So, we're just kind of checking off the boxes, there's quite a few of them, but everything's looking good on the schedule to to get them all in place.
Okay, any questions? I think this is an exciting opportunity and, uh, appreciate the help that you guys have have, uh, provided so far. And and as this goes forward, we'll appreciate it even more.
Yeah, we always appreciate the opportunity to to work with the group and the water department, so thank you. And, um, that's that's kind of my little presentation for the evening. Guys, I'll have another resolution to do here as part of the loan requirements and we can move forward.
Sounds good, thank you, Mike.
You do have to give, uh, anyone who wants to make public comment an opportunity to do, since this is technically a loan.
Sure.
Through the state of Kansas, uh, even though it is a hundred percent forgiven, we still have to provide that opportunity.
I see no one online, anyone in the room care to comment? This forecast to raise costs to the consumer?
Shouldn't, uh, and part of the pilot.
Chemicals.
Right.
Chemicals are expensive.
Correct, yeah, um, so when we treat the blue-green algae now, we use about sixty percent more chemicals than we we normally would treat the water. So, the idea that these chemicals would be doing it, uh, chlorine dioxide, it's about a hundred times more reactive than some of the things we use now. Um, so, if everything goes as as supposed to, it should theoretically reduce the costs, uh, by using a different set of chemicals. So, it should, now.
Looking forward to the refund.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes. Yeah, we'll see how it, uh, goes when we do the pilot study, we'll be able to know a lot more about what the actual levels are and kind of how that looks.
This content, you know, the the, uh, blue-green algae issue is just is has not gotten better, it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. It used to be something we would deal with for a few days, beginning in the beginning, uh, stages of it, then it became a week or two. Then it became about a month and now it's just pretty much almost all summer. Well, now we're we're using chemicals and so our costs just skyrocketed and and the other. The other part of of, uh, the the, uh, chemicals that we use today is. We use them and then we have to get them back out because they're in themselves are not healthful. So, we need to remove them from the system. And that, you know, there's added costs for doing that as well, so this is something that we feel like is is cleaner and safer. And less expensive, that's that's the hope of it.
So I know a while back, there was a group created to kind of go out there and see if they could do some things to prevent fertilizer, what have you. Get flowing into the business. Hey, so you're saying they made no progress, they made progress?
I don't know if I can comment on how how much progress they made, I think they were using the RAPS program, correct? Yeah, so that does bring, supposed to bring, uh, area farmers together to help limit fertilizers through different practices. I can't comment on how effective that's been. Um, obviously, we can see that the the blue-green algae issue has gotten worse, so. And there may be some, there's definitely more opportunity, I guess, for that to be more effective.
I can tell you that, uh, we spent a lot of time talking with, uh, both state and, uh, federal legislators and their offices and their staffs. And they've been working very cooperatively with us and this particular program we're talking about today is kind of a result of 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 some of those conversations. That we had with, uh, with, uh, Senator Wilborn and his and his team that kind of got behind us and and provided some support. But what we did find in this process is when you think about water in the state. There's a new, there's numerous groups that are involved in water, but no one has responsibility theoretically for the quality of the water. There's a group that that that's in charge and that owns the water and sells it to us. But they don't have any authority to, uh, to, uh, do anything about the cleanliness of the water. The Corps of Engineers is there to strictly provide, uh, flood control. And so they have no no authority to deal with the quality of the water. KDHE has absolved themselves from from that as well, as I understand it, I mean, maybe that's not a fair way to say it, but. I'm not sure how else to say it, so. We found out that basically if we want clean water, it's up to us to figure out the best and cheapest way to get it. But the good news is, is if if you wanna look at it this way, is the quantity of the water supply that we have is very good. And there are a lot of towns in Kansas, especially Western Kansas, that have water scarcity issues. In fact, I think the city of Hays, we learned that, uh, last year's LKM meeting is building a sixty-plus mile pipeline to bring water to Hays. Because they don't have enough water to to support their growth of the of the community, so. That's not a problem we have, and if we can use this pilot program and create a better way to, uh, to get our water clean, I think that benefits all of us, so.
Is this problem distinct for this reservoir or do other reservoirs have the same?
They do, maybe not to this extent, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure that as many people fight it as much as we seem to there. But I don't have any facts to back that up, Rod. Any other comments or questions? Good comments, I appreciate it, Rod. Okay, hearing none, uh, we will move to, uh, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, authorizing the submission. Of the KPWSLF application. Somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Okay.
Councilman McCarty seconds, we'll now poll the council, Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven is hereby adopted. And the mayor will sub-sign and the city will submit the app, the application. Um, we now move from that public hearing into a public hearing for three eleven North Lincoln, Mr. Styles.
Okay, thank you, sir, so we're just kind of following up. We, um, set the public hearing for this based on the building inspector's report, um, regarding condition of three eleven North Lincoln. Uh, I had, uh, Mr. Dick go out and redo his reports. Uh, there's an opportunity for someone to to make, uh, improvements since then. And at three eleven North Lincoln, there've been no improvements, uh, from the initial code enforcement report. Uh, the structure is still according to to Doug's interpretation and violation of. Two thousand twenty-one International Public Maintenance Code. One 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 dot one dot three, excuse me, that's a mouthful. Uh, a structure for unfit for human occupation where at least one perimeter window is broken out, cracks visible in the foundation, exterior walls in the garage, defects. Admit weather and wild weapons and the system, the exterior porch is not structured to sound to walk on. Uh, there's also some more, um, sections of the IPMC that are in violation. Uh, there's walking surface in the front of the house, it's unsafe, the roof of the house is damaged by deterioration and neglect. Uh, the front porch ceiling is collapsing, porch is unsafe to step on due to riding boards, at least one broken window, both house and garage are unsecured. Uh, the structure appears to be abandoned and may create an attractive nuisance to children. So, based on those facts, uh, we we find that the the structure has not been corrected. And so according to our process is laid out by Triplett Wolf and Garrettson, uh, the next step with this would be the. Consideration of resolution twenty dash ten, twenty two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Uh, which would require the repair or demolition of the structure and the removal of objects located at three one, three eleven North Lincoln. Um, so in this case, uh, the. The, uh. You know, if we were to approve this, the property, there'll be a forty-five day work period, uh, in which the resolution work can actually happen by the homeowner. And if at that point, the work is not commenced in those forty-five days, um, by the owner, uh, that's failed to make any kind of progress on it. Uh, the city acting on October twenty twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, uh, can cause that structure and objects located on the property to be repaired, harassed and moved. Uh, the cost then assessed back onto property, uh, according to to the state statute, so. Um, is there anything you'd like to add to that, Andrew?
I don't think so, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
When you mean, uh, remi- is it remit- rem- remediate the property, what do you, what does that mean?
Remediate?
From, yeah.
Means to repair it to bring it up to code?
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Um, the question I would have, the city does raise a property and assess the the costs to the property. When, what then becomes the process at that point that that, I believe the owner has thirty days to to renumerate the city, is that correct?
Right, so if the if the forty-five days pass and nothing happens and the city is is takes care of it themselves, then you account for all the costs that you've actually incurred in doing that. You then send notices to the owner, uh, that tells them this is how much the city incurred to do this work and you have thirty days to pay it. And if you don't, we'll go through the special assessment process. And, you know, if that doesn't get paid, then it gets submitted to the county and and assessed as special assessment to the property.
But it generally before the city could take. Um, control of the property, it would be what, I guess, maybe even up to a three-year process at that point?
Well, so if you assess the cost as a special assessment. Uh, it would go on the tax bill, just like the regular county taxes. And and then, yeah, if it doesn't get paid, you have to wait for the county to go through its tax foreclosure process, which. Generally is, you know, once every three years, depending on the county's processes, uh, and then it would go to tax foreclosure sale. Uh, and then, you know.
Whoever would buy it, would theoretically would have to pay that bill, correct or not?
They, well, they would, it. It depends on what the purchase price is, so, I mean, just like any foreclosure, it will get sold for the highest possible amount. But to the extent that doesn't cover. All of the taxes on the property than both the county and the city, you know, it could, it could be out some portion if it doesn't sell credit money. You could, you know, credit bid, I suppose, uh, and and try to take care of it that way.
So is my understanding, we've been unable to, uh, contact the the property owner?
Yeah, three eleven North Lincoln, I have not been able to contact the property.
Um, so the opportunity has has been done in the past to acquire the property or have them deed it to the land bank. There's really not a lot of potential for that at this point?
Not at this point, we've had no response from the property owner of record, so.
Well, it's it's a public health hazard, there's no question about that. And.
That's it.
I can't imagine that people in the neighborhood, although we've had other such system situations in the past where. Neighbors have complained about about property, uh, in their neighborhood, I don't know that we've had any of this particular situation, but. We probably, it's probably still something that, uh, we need to, we're gonna need to step up to. Is it gonna be the the lesser cost to, uh, I assume to do it ourselves as opposed to have someone else do it?
Yeah, yeah, it would be significantly less to do that.
Okay. Is it, is this property owner anywhere in the area or is it completely out of state or something?
Uh, we think that the property owner may be deceased.
Yes.
Okay.
That wasn't true?
Yep. Ceased, uh, and so it'd be next.
The only one left.
Jeff, okay. I'm not, I don't know Jeff, but.
Um, works at, uh, Wendy's, rides his bike daily.
Okay. So he's not the title, the owner, according to the county, but potentially could be, it sounds like if Evelyn has passed. So I don't know how we would remedy that situation.
Well, we can't remedy that situation. Uh, only the, only the estate of the of the owner can remedy that situation now. Of course, you could reach out to you, they could see whether you can get someone to do something about it, but we wouldn't be able to force anything on that front.
What confuses me is it's taxes are delinquent to two thousand eighteen. And it's my understanding that county. Up their rules to they could foreclose in a year's time.
After three years delinquency, they can go through their their process, they're past their process window there, they they could do it in any time. Good question, uh, the county, I I'm not sure when their tax sale schedule is, um. Yeah, we'd have to.
Either their doctor is just so full that they can't have.
Yeah, I guess, I guess to that, to. Yeah, I guess, I guess to that, to that point, um, is it similar to uh one oh one South Main where? You know, the uh. The uh, if the uh, if the county. Came and 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 sold it in a tax sale, then whoever bought it would then be responsible. For the property as it as it is and be forced either raise it or or repair it.
Yeah, what we want to be, if 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 we know that. It's potentially at the time when the county might be looking to include it in its proceedings, we probably ought to reach out to them. Cause we would want them to do that while we're working through this. Process. So if we're gonna reach out to the county, do we still go ahead with the resolution?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do we have any kind of idea at this stage? Probably not, it's what an estimate to raise the property gonna be?
I don't.
I guess before we, before we take any action on those lines.
Yeah, we'll have a forty five day window to have a pretty good idea.
So we can go to the county and.
Yeah, we can have us ask those questions.
And nothing about this obligates the city to do anything, this only gives you the. The right to do something after these time periods pass, yeah.
Thanks, any other questions? Comments?
So no one's reached out to Jeff, true?
I have not, uh, I think. I think Doug did through this process, but I can't confirm what the response was to Jeff. So I I can do that, I can find out what he, what his response was.
Hey, any other? Comments, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty two dash ten. Giving the homeowner forty five days to repair. Structure and authorizing the city to proceed with remediating the property after that period. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty, Councilman By.
Yes.
A motion, resolution twenty twenty two dash ten is hereby adopted. Uh, we will now move from that public hearing into a public hearing on four oh five South Birch, Mr. Styles.
So with four oh five South Birch, uh, we did have. Mister Dick go back out and look at that property. Um, the code violations where the structure is considered unfit for human occupancy have been addressed. Um, all of those have been addressed, uh, both sections of which he had a dangerous. Dangerous property, and you can kind of tell by Doug's um report there, so what what has happened? Is that the owner has taken and put fencing. Uh, to secure the base of that, and then there was a broken window in the back that was also covered with fencing. Uh. So from that perspective, the safety issues have been addressed. Uh, for the code purposes, it's no longer a danger structure, but uh. Doug does make in a, does make a a note on there that he still feels that it does constitute a blight on the surrounding properties. Uh, you know, that's, that's kind of a subjective measurement, um. The surrounding properties are, there's kind of an empty, well, there's a commercial structure to the south, an empty lot. Uh, there's another mobile home directly to the west. Uh, and then there's some standard home, uh, standard, more traditional homes kind of to the to the north there and across the street, so. You know, blight is one of those things you're gonna have to make a a judgment call on whether or not it constitutes taking any further action. Um. I can tell you that the the parts of the code which have been mediated uh to address the danger structure have been taken care of, so. That is where we're at, if you wanted to move forward, it'd be the same process. Uh, as we just talked about using the resolution, I didn't give it a number because I wasn't sure if we were gonna use this one. It would be two thousand twenty two dash eleven um. For that resolution number on four oh five South Birch. So uh, it's it's up to the council's judgment there whether or not you want to take the action to move forward with it considered a blight because the. Uh, public nuisance unsafe portion of the pro uh. Of the, of the report have been remediated.
Questions? Comments from the public? Have, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna ask if we had any complaints from any of the property owners adjacent or in proximity of this property?
Not that I'm aware of, it's not since the remediations did that.
It seems to me this is considerably different than the other where you have the safety hazard. This is a different level than that one.
Right, yeah, this is a little different, different. So, uh, of course, you know, having the way that was, the property was before with the skirting being. Uh, open and that's obviously something that's unsafe. Uh, having windows broken now is an unsafe thing too, can be attractive to children or animals, animals are probably more likely. Um, but once you've covered those up, regardless of how that's done, it does meet the, meet the. Requirements for safety at that point.
What has the uh? Obviously, the property owner responded to uh to uh Mr. Dick's. Um, instructions relative to the outside issues of the property. Is this property have in 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 habitation right now? Do we know what the property owner's intent is with this structure?
I have not had a conversation with them. So, I don't know, Doug may have had that conversation, but that was never conveyed to me.
Is it secure?
Yes, we believe that it's a.
I mean, it has a, it has a lock, the doors lock.
Unable to get in, so. It does meet, it meets all those minimum requirements for that.
So. Under uh, under a resolution twenty twenty two eleven, which I don't know that we have in our pack, do we?
Yeah, there's a copy over here.
Oh, is there, okay.
After the uh, report.
Oh, I see. So what is the uh? What, what would, what action would be? Would we be taking place if we determined it was a blighting issue because? In my mind, the the property you're adjacent to it looks very similar. So.
Yeah, that.
I mean, if we're gonna, we're gonna determine this is blighted, then I guess, doesn't that kind of leave us open with the property adjacent?
Yeah, I mean, you would to. To pass this resolution, you'd be making findings that this property is. Constitutes a public nuisance is unsafe or dangerous. Um, I think with the. I mean, in in the opinion of of our code inspector, if work has been done that has alleviated any of the. Specific points where he says this is a danger or this is a, you know, a nuisance or attractive nuisance to kids or whatever it might be. If he's said he doesn't believe it's a violation anymore, uh, I don't know if you can make those findings that. That would support this resolution of recording. Uh. This sort of, there's not really a provision for just, it's generally blighted, you know, you have to make these specific. Findings.
So, do we need to call the question?
So, eh, well, eh, just to review your options here, you could make this finding on that, although it doesn't seem to have much basis, in fact. Uh. The other option would be just to to not not do the resolution, um, I guess, would you? Want to still call the vote in question or would you just?
There's no reason, I mean, anyone can make a motion here to pass this resolution, if no one does. Then.
That was.
No action to be taken, you don't have to vote it down.
Right, that was where I was going, right.
Have there, have there been any uh negative comments about the structure at all?
And not, not that we're aware of from anyone surrounding.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty two dash ten? Hearing none, uh, we, that will die for lack of emotion. Now, I think we're done with public hearings, are we?
So.
That's it? You're not gonna sneak one in here?
No, there's no, no more public hearings today.
Alright, so we're into our business items agenda, and the first item there is resolution. Twenty twenty two dash oh eight approving the name change of K P P to K P P Evergy. And uh, since we have a, Mr. Kovar is also repres- representative of Triple Wolf and Garrettson, is there any comments you'd like to make regarding this? Issue?
No.
Very good. Does everybody understand what what we're talking about here? Uh, under Colin Hanson, the new CEO's leadership, he is looking at uh creating some. New branding opportunities for K P P and with. Future uh efforts directed towards more electric generation. Uh, with the uh, with the Wartzilla project that many of you have heard about. Larry had a nice little Lego model of. Generators and uh, so uh, you know, it just seems like it it makes sense. Uh, in fact, the uh, agency gets a lot of calls. Uh, asking for pool supplies and pool chemicals, things of that nature when uh. That is not the kind of pool we're talking about. So it it uh, the direction and uh, of the board of directors uh under Colin's leadership. And I am on the board for full uh disclosure, uh, has recommended a name change from. Kansas Power Pool K P P, a municipal energy agency to K P P Energy. A municipal energy agency, and none of the functions or or action. Or activities of the of the pool will be changed in in by this, it's just a way to better identify ourselves. But. Because we are a joint action agency and we are uh controlled by the member cities that are that uh. Uh, govern the uh, the uh, agency, it is required by each member city to adopt. This or to approve this action, so that's what's being asked for here. Did I miss anything?
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty two dash oh eight.
Okay, is there, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Councilman Lowen, second by Councilman Dreers. Any other discussion? Hearing none, always, we will poll the council, Councilman Dreers.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty, Councilman By.
Yes.
Motion, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next item up is appointment of League of Kansas Municipalities Voting Delegates, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so the uh, L K M annual conference is on uh. The eighth, eighth, ninth and tenth of October, and we've got uh. Mayor Thurston, Councilman By, uh, Danielle and myself are all planning attending. Um, as a city of our size. We have the opportunity to have two votes during the regular business meeting of the league. And so in order to do that, we have to nominate and the council has to officially point to. Two voting members and then can also appoint two alternates, um, so. In this case, we recommend that uh Mayor Thurston and Councilman By be the uh voting members and that. Uh, Danielle and I become the alternate members.
Any questions?
Since uh, I would be voting on this, do I just abstain to this vote then? Or does it matter?
No, you don't need to abstain on on this.
Okay.
Unless there's some financial interest you need to disclose and. Of Kansas municipalities.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Alright, is there uh, do I have a motion to appoint? The uh, mayor, myself and Councilman By as voting delegates, City Clerk. Bartle and City Administrator Styles is voting alternates. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now move on to us, little financial business, uh, fifty nine dollars and thirty five cents worth, Mr. Styles.
Sir, so this is our four invoice, uh, it was for an oil change, uh, a police vehicle. So the total on that was fifty nine dollars and thirty five cents.
Any questions or comments regarding the cost of the oil change? Hearing none, I accept a motion to approve forward invoice totaling fifty nine dollars thirty five cents for payment.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. What's that?
Since we're on the subject. Heals for Ford, can you update me on that electrical? Charging station? I heard a rumor the other day that. If you own the electric vehicle, you wouldn't even be able to use that thing.
Well, we can, we can get to that later in the next public comment section, Rod.
Okay.
If that's okay. Um, so, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is abstaining?
Abstain.
All is opposed. Motion carries. We have. One more resolution for uh consideration or to talk about anyway tonight. I don't think we're gonna take action, correct, or are we?
Uh, no, we can take action tonight.
Okay, this is resolution twenty twenty two dash oh nine, consideration of K dot. Cost sharing application, I don't see Mr. Newfield here as. Think.
Tonight happened to stack up to be, we've got several cost share applications we're making. So he's over at Lions wrapping theirs up, just hoping he can make it back here, but. But wasn't able to, but um. For the business tonight, for the cost share program with K dot, need to do another resolution to support that application. And Darren's put together uh. The Adam Street project, which is the remaining portion, it's been um. Unimproved that will be replaced, it'll match what has been improved with six inch pavement and a good base and a geo net. It's worked out real well, so um. What needs to be decided before you guys act on your resolution tonight is. The percent match that the city, the city is willing to put forward for the application. So that's part of what goes into the resolution, and there's some cost benefit. Two way in those determination, the minimum is a fifteen percent cost match on the construction amount. Um. In, in what we've seen in the past. Very few projects have been selected for the program that have seen that cost match. Uh, twenty percent for a strong project is kind of where we've seen a lot of the projects funded at. And then if you would be willing to go to twenty five percent, uh, we've seen that make even a stronger case to K dot. For uh, for support. Uh, the other caveat of the project that the design and inspection is the city cost and then your share on the. On the cover for the, the match. So it it's kind of a, kind of a little bit of a crystal ball. But uh. Just kind of what our experience has been in the past on that minimal amount versus the the higher amount to move forward, so. I think Darren had some, you know, some more follow up with you, Matt, if if you had anything else to share on it.
No, and we talked about, uh, so just to give a reference, you know, we approved this cost share application last year, but we went back and. Looked at it again and we extended it from uh A Street to B Street to include that block as well, that wasn't in the original application last year. Uh, which doesn't make a lot of sense considering the condition of 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 that section right there, so. Uh, with the new Tabor dorm going in, which is at the corner of B and and Adams, well, essentially at the corner of B and Adams. Uh. You know, it kind of makes sense to to continue with this uh improvement and to to make application there, it's a little bit. Staggering to me when you talk about how much a block of of concrete street is right now, but if Dyer and I talked about that today. They've had so many issues with getting contractors to even bid on projects that. They've, you know, err on the side of caution and increased these, so the actual bid price will probably be hopefully. Lot less because this comes out to somewhere around three hundred thousand dollar block for a concrete street, which is. That gave me a heart attack when I saw that, uh, normally, uh, you know, somewhere around one sixty to one seventy. Certainly less than two hundred thousand a block is is pretty typical, um, so this is, you know, it's overestimated. We'll just put it that way, so um. With this, it would be in state fiscal year twenty four, um, which starts in the middle half of next year. I think that's correct is how that was doing, but Darren also said that there's a lot of federal money coming into these programs right now, and so it could actually be. Bumped up sooner, uh, that's something we want to think about, it could end up being sooner, but we still have two years for, once it's awarded in order to complete the project, so. Uh, there's a little bit of opportunity there. Um, you know, as far as what we would do with that funding portion at two hundred and eighty five. Thousand at twenty five percent match, we'd probably have to look at either bonding in or doing some kind of short term note. To get through that, because we don't probably have that sitting in the in hand right now. In a road fund specifically for road improvement. Um so that's something else to consider. There probably be some costs associated with that too.
It wouldn't be in next year's budget.
No, it wouldn't be after, yeah, it'd be in the year after. So there would be an opportunity there for one year if you could try to work it in on a cash, cash basis too. Uh and of course, the design and the inspection fees are approximate too. We don't know what those will actually end up being.
Yeah, and and what what Darren said, he would set up on those at the an hourly basis, not to exceed. So they'd be more approximately at those amounts or less. You know, the inspection especially kind of varies with with what your contractors are and how how much time you gotta spend on site, but traditionally we've been here local, you can save, save costs on the inspection.
Have any brick lift on?
We do, but not enough. So yeah, that would be uh an option. And one of the other things we want to talk about is uh if we wanted to move forward with this, we've got the uh school district who's who's poised, I guess, to do a resolution of support for this project. Uh if that's something we decide to move forward with, so they would, they were happy to do that. If that's something that would be helpful. And also Tabor will issue a letter of support. They don't do informal resolutions, but uh I think those would be pretty.
It's a heavily traveled road right there.
It is, it is. It's one of the main entrances, at least the Tabor. Um and also the high school there too for
Are two big or south arteries, so.
Yeah. Certainly needs improvement. There's no doubt about that. It's just when you can use KDOT's money, it's always better than using ours.
Oh.
Remind me, we did, we did twenty percent last year.
I think we did. I was pretty sure we did.
Yeah.
You did not get fun.
Right. I was pretty sure we didn't go into Lois last year. My opinion would be uh to look to the twenty-five percent this year, just to try to get it funded.
Yeah. Well, with more money in the program, there's a better chance, obviously, but uh it's hard because some of these, some of these KDOT projects, the the cost share projects, they come in pretty big and they have some pretty big ones and they're always kind of looking for smaller ones to fit in there. So this may fit that, although this isn't exactly a small project either when you start looking at numbers, but
Not for us, it isn't.
Not for us, no.
It's not like Wichita building an overpass.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine. Uh consideration of KDOT cost sharing application at twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, Councilman Drayers moves, is there a second?
Sure.
Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none will poll the council, Councilman Drayers.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine is adopted at uh a cost share of twenty-five percent on behalf of the city of Hillsborough.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you being here.
Mm-hmm, good to see you, buddy.
Good to, good to be seen. Okay, next item is our city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
Uh okay, so painful stuff. I kind of did some bullet points. This may be a lot of small stuff happening. But first big thing, uh the community childcare center received an anonymous donation ninety thousand dollars um last week. So that really helps kick off the uh fundraising. The group's really been trying to reach a fifty fifty match for the CBG grant of six hundred thousand. Uh still pretty confident they're gonna get there. Um they've got, been courting a lot of people on that and uh really ramped up the idea of uh giving Tuesday and are kind of working on that, using the community foundations money to help with that too. Uh the requirement, the very minimum requirement for the match is a hundred and fifty, so they're very they're they're getting close to at least meeting minimum and still want to do the six hundred thousand. So uh great way to kick off that fundraising. I think that they're, they're doing a lot of good work with that and hopefully maybe moving forward pretty soon.
Really?
Yeah. Uh arts and crafts, of course, that's coming up. It's looming on the calendar for the seventeenth. Um we met with the arts and crafts director last week and kind of went through our normal duties and assumptions. We've got a few things that are moving around this year because of uh our corner building in one-on-one South Main. Uh so we're moving a few things and so we've had to do some rearranging of power. Uh the arts and crafts committee, you know, they pay us for trash service and they typically pay for uh police protection. For for people to come in, I guess, off duty uh to come in and and work that. Uh they've been paying fifteen bucks an hour, our part timers make eighteen, and so we agreed to pay the difference, that three dollars difference uh for this event. It's an important event for us. You know, they're looking at, you know, it's been a little sluggish coming back from COVID nineteen and so they're looking for ways to trim costs. And I think that'll probably continue into the future. Uh so don't know what that means for us, but we're excited to have arts and crafts coming on the seventeenth. Hope to have a big crowd. I think it'll be a a good event. So come on out and enjoy, enjoy all the fun of arts and crafts. It's a good time. Uh couple of quick things, farm ground, we've got leases uh which are titled now to the city, but um some of those properties moved to the land bank. And so September, October, maybe the next meeting, we're gonna try to convert all those over to be the appropriate uh to the land bank and then of course to um change the rents. The rents haven't been changed in several years. And we've got a few where we do crop share and then we've got cash rent. We really prefer the cash rent because we're not farmers and don't want to get best in involved with the selling of crops. So uh that'll be coming up here shortly. Uh pool closed on September two and so Kara is gonna be here next meeting to talk about how the season went and then some potential improvements. Uh Jesse Dirks, one of our street guys, has transferred over to our electric department starting today. Lou and I have been working with our town development on a few projects. We've got some, some really good traction going, I think, with housing and some other uh potential things at the golf course. We're likely gonna need to make some changes with the golf course and then how the golf course association relationship works to help move uh to improve this facility. So we'll probably have more conversations about that in the near future. Um health insurance savings reports there. And so we save uh five thousand seven hundred and forty compared to our fully funded models. Claim reserve fund is actually a little higher than that seventy thousand. It's seventy-six, seventy-five, I think is what Julie said this morning.
Oh, right.
So um once we hit our actuarial amount, which means the hundred percent of our actual risk is about eighty thousand and she recommends having reserves up to a hundred and twenty percent, hundred and twenty-five percent. So once we hit about a hundred thousand in that reserve fund, we'll stop backing it off and not putting money in there. Uh kind of keeping it, monitoring it from there. Uh KPP bills attached there. So you got July is one of our traditionally high months. You've probably noticed that from the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar power bill for the month. Uh we're about seventy, between seventy and eighty thousand less collected on the surcharge uh due to our timing issues and system loss and sort of the outstanding billing and how that works. So uh once that goes away, we'll probably have a few months where we have to continue that surcharge to recoup that. Uh attached is layer, a letter that the mayor sent over to the county commission, thanking them for the improvements on thirteen mile road. It's very nice. Good improvement. Looks great. Our sales tax distribution for August was ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. That's twenty-two percent higher than it was last year overall for the year. Uh trending thirty-six percent higher for the five-year rolling total. So based on the collections, I'm anticipating we're gonna get close to around a million bucks this year in sales tax.
Question.
Yeah.
What is the city's uh percentage of sales tax so that we collect?
Percentage of sales tax, so we have
So on on a dollar, it's eight and a half percent, right, for the city of Hillsborough?
And
That's how much is collected? How much of that eight and a half percent is the city's?
There, make sure I get it right, one percent.
Yeah. That's including our half cent.
For the
So a total of one one cent. Okay, so you do the math to figure out how much where sales revenue it takes to generate one million dollars of revenue for the city at one cent on the dollar. That's a a lot of sales. So that just shows the health of our community and our economy here in Hillsborough that uh you know, these numbers are at record, record levels. Well, let you, to let you talk.
Says here ninety thousand, you're anticipating around a million.
Mm-hmm.
For the year.
Year.
For the year.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that was just a month long, okay.
Yeah, it's just a month, August.
Okay, I got it. I always think it was a little
Any other questions?
So when our governor gets around to removing the food tax, are you gonna remove your one percent?
I don't think we have any intention of removing any sales tax from the city of Hillsborough at this time, no. It's either, it's either get, get it there or get it for property tax and it's, you know, it's six and a half a dozen in some, some respects. You know, so no, I have to answer your question. We don't have any plans at this time. Any other questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, we will now move into public comments and Mr. Funk, you had a question regarding electric vehicle charging, sir.
Yeah, he's gone on that the Councilman By could maybe answer this. You kind of run me through how, let's say I own a electric vehicle, how I come and use your charger there?
Can he move over to the
Slide a little closer to the table, the speaker picks it up directionally.
There we go.
Is this better?
That's, yeah, perfect.
Can you run me through how I have my electric vehicle and I need charging?
As of right, as of right now, Hillsborough Ford has just the one charging station out front. And for right now, we can't charge for it because the way the legislature works in Kansas, we're not a utility, so the dealership can't charge to have you charge your car yet, but it's in the works. We're there, you'll have to talk with the Hagens about how that all works, but as far as I know, we've got two or three people that have, that are using it frequently. And I don't think they're paying for anything for right now.
Good, yeah.
Kind of running a debit.
Do what?
They're running a debit. They'll eventually have to pay.
Yes. That's the goal.
So now revert to the city's charging station. How are you doing?
Uh it's, it's currently open. I mean, it, there's no, it's not uh, it's metered, but there's no mechanism for charging. Yeah, I do, it, it can be locked out and but timed. Uh I don't know that we are at this point. We haven't really had too many people using it, so.
The purpose of the chargers that was uh with the part in conjunction with the Kansas Power Pool is really to promote electric vehicles, but also to uh give people visiting the city of Hillsborough an opportunity to charge their vehicle if they come for a visit. Now, it's a level two charger. It's not a level three fast charge. So it takes several hours to to get any kind of charge out of it. There's
Walk me through the procedure.
Well, you, yeah, you just come up and you can
Come up and plug in.
Plug in right now, yeah.
Go take a nap for a couple hours.
Spend some money and generate some sales tax.
Right, that's, that's, that's the approach, yeah. I mean, we've talked about ways to do that and I think the actually does bear, the council needs to kind of weigh in on what they want to see, uh how they want to see that done. But the idea was that, you know, you're not, not gonna be coming out leaving it overnight and you know, you're you and your, you and your local person doing it. So uh we do have a rebate program and the KPP does the same thing for um if you want to do one at the, at your home, there's a rebate program for that too. So you know, that's, that's kind of the process right now. There's not much, it's not really regulated super tightly. Of course, we haven't really had too many people using it.
How's billing work?
Uh it's billed, it's just metered energy that comes to the city.
I mean, you So the city is absorbing it.
Yeah.
The city's absorbing it.
Not at this point.
Right now.
Oh.
The city, the city's absorbing the cost.
Yeah, for ours.
Now the cost, we talked about this before, but relative to the the cost of uh per kilowatt hour, what, what are we talking about an hour?
Uh yeah, it's, you know, it's, if you do it at the pri- rate that we would charge um like Ford, it's one and a half, a hundred and fifty percent of um wholesale cost. So it's uh for a kilowatt hour, it's I think last month it was like three cents kilowatt hour, so three point nine, something like that. So do the math from there. Doesn't add up so much. Uh we've spent, I think I did the math on it the last time we pulled the bill and it was like forty dollars total over the time it's been on an operation. So we don't have a lot of people utilizing it. Um the intention is to promote it as a, again, somebody coming in or out of town to use it. So that would be the intent.
There's a whole, there's like a whole lot of stories that are going on around the EV charging. So I'm probably the last person that can probably answer it, but um as far as I know, it's up and going, you can use it, so.
I know that uh I I don't know if if uh you bought an EV vehicle from Ford, do they also have the ability to sell you some kind of charger with the vehicle?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I would think so, but I couldn't tell you.
I know this summer when we were at the uh American Public Power Association meeting, the uh costs associated with those high-end level three chargers, they're about a hundred thousand dollars a piece is what one of those costs. So they're not cheap.
Not here that high, but
Well, that's what they were, that's a number they were throwing around this summer.
I'll, I'll look into, I'll look into that tomorrow, Lou. I'll do some math and see if Ford has any type of rebates or if they even sell stuff. I would think that they would, but I don't know.
I mean, you know, this, I I don't want this, you know, as, as much as, as uh, as uh we appreciate Ford and the business that they do and the sales tax they generate. This isn't a commercial for, for Ford or or anybody like that. It's
Right.
Just, you know, it's good, it's good questions, you know, that would be helpful if they could maybe supply some information, that'd be good.
Midwest has declined. The charger, I had a conversation with them about adding chargers out there. They're not moving into that space for various reasons. It has mostly to do with Chevrolet, it sounds like, about their programs, what their requirements are. So they're not intending on moving in that space anytime soon. Now with the way the legislature works and how things happen in Washington, who knows? They may be forced into that, but at this point, that's not their plan.
Did that address your question at all, Rod?
Somewhat, okay. From what I gather online, studying this online, is anybody can buy a charger and have it installed in
That's right.
Your house. But it is expensive.
Yeah, right, that's it, yeah.
A level three, well, a level two charger like um, well, like the one at Ford, they bought through Ford, they bought theirs and I think it was thirty-six hundred dollars or something like that, so.
I mean, the whole point of the level three is you go fast.
Yeah, level three, I mean, this was the level two charger.
Right, uh level three, the reason why it's so expensive is it's fast. So it's the equivalent of a gas station. So what they're gonna
Well, that's what they're trying.
Well, you know, if you want to spend a half an hour at the gas station.
Right.
You know, I think the, the biggest, the biggest issues, you know, it, it around EVs nationally were this summer anyway in Nashville at the, at the convention were the uh first of all, the, the ability to generate the power to uh, to provide the electricity required. The second was the infrastructure, the electric grid itself. And then third was the uh, was the charging stations and and not just the cost, but even the availability of those. And then finally was uh the EVs themselves and again, availability, cost, et cetera. And the range, range uh uh, uh the fear of of not being able to go far enough is you know, is is one of the biggest issues in terms of people adopting EVs, especially out flyover country like uh, like I guess we live in, so. Anything else, Rod?
Nope.
Okay. Alicia, you have anything you'd like to say? All right. Well, if there's no other business that needs to come before, we do have some other business. We have council comments. Councilman By, you got anything for us?
Nothing today.
Okay, well, it sounds like you've got some homework anyway.
I do.
Okay. Councilman McCarty. Councilman Lowen.
Uh just saw that um on our things we paid out, there were some more things for the splash pad. And I know that that's gonna continue that way, but I was just wondering what, if you guys have ever worked on the on the proposed budget for what that's gonna take and how we're gonna cover all that. I just think that'd be great to have that out in front of the public.
Yeah.
So.
So, you, you have a, uh, we've been accounting for all that, yeah, we can do that.
Anything else?
Just let us make a progress too.
Okay, I have one uh, comment from a citizen regarding one of the utility poles on the uh, Evergy uh, substation routing into, on uh, Adam Street, I guess we've got one that's pretty cattywampus out there. It kind of, kind of leaning over into, into uh, into, into next, the next space over.
You mean that the rectangular architectural wood one?
There's more than one of those.
Well, it's it, it's, yeah, we have a, we have a uh, a concerned citizen that, that, you know, just afraid that, you know, if it's starting out crooked, you know, is it gonna get more crooked as time goes on?
Fair, that's a fair question.
So uh, I'd like to see us take a look at that if we could, please.
I wonder why they didn't put it in there straight again.
Oh, I'm sure they have a reason. I've been amazed that, I watch that process daily. And man, those, those people are thorough with the way they operate, what they do.
Anyway, that's all I've got, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you didn't have, have pizza as quick as that was.
Well, yeah, thanks Blake.
See you guys.
Thank you, no pizza for you.